I guess it's a good thing that every candidate we invited showed up to take up so much time, so thank you guys for staying with us. Now we're going to start the actual forum part of the event. So if John Sherrill and Jim Tate can make their way up, please. The only local election that we're going to have on the ballot right now for the primary is for our county commission District 1. We have three districts in Macon County. We have District 1, which is the Highlands District. We have District 2, which is the Franklin area district that we have three seats open for. They'll be on the November ballot. And then we have District 3, which is the Nana Hala district. So we're going to hear from our Highlands candidates tonight. They're going to have time to introduce themselves, then we're going to have questions. So gentlemen, to begin with, you have to introduce yourself, why you're running for office, tell us a little bit about your experience.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank all of you for coming out tonight. Again, my name is Jim Tate, and I am your current chairman of the Macon County Board of Commissioners, and I'm running for reelection. And it's kind of fun to stand up here and talk about yourself, but I'm actually just slightly nervous about it because there's a lot of you I don't know, but I want to give you my story. In 1995, I graduated from the University of Georgia. I had a beautiful girlfriend that would soon be my wife. Allison, can you wave your hand back there, please? And I had a choice at that point. I could go anywhere in the world and start a life. And I chose Macon County because I personally think it's the greatest place in the world. I've since had a lot of opportunity to travel, and I've affirmed that decision. I am now the sixth generation of my family to say that. They all could have made the same choice, and they did. So since I've moved home, I've made it a promise to myself that I would make a difference. My two children back there, Ethan and Eliza, can y'all wave your hands? I'm going to make sure that Macon County is a great place for them to one day be the seventh of my family. I make that promise to them, and because I make that promise to them, I can make that promise to all of you. I will work hard to make Macon County government the best that it can be, to make Macon County continually be the best place in the world to live. I will make sure that we provide the services that you all need for the best price possible. We are currently, out of all 100 counties in North Carolina, we have the second lowest tax rate of everyone, but yet we're still providing the services that we need. I just want to make a difference, and I want all of y'all to be proud of me. I want to be proud of where I'm from. My friend back here, who's also running for the same position, Mr. John Sherrill. John and I live in the same community. We're both landscapers in Highlands. We've both served on the Highlands Fire Department together. We both have kids in the same school. They play on the same soccer team. You will not find me saying anything bad about this man. He works hard for his family, just like I work hard for mine. I will be positive. I'm not going to whine. I'm not going to complain. I'm going to problem solve. I'm going to be a leader. I'm going to serve with integrity. I'm going to take all my experiences from the five businesses that I'm the leader of. I'm going to take everything I've learned to make Macon County the best it can be, and that's my promise. Thank you again. I'm Jim Tate.
I'm John Sherrill. As Jim said, I'm running for District 1, Macon County Commissioner, and I'm just going to tell you right off the bat, I did not sign up until 20 minutes till 12, the last day of filing. And the number one reason why that I filed is to protect my freedom and my private property. The county government threw the soil and erosion addendum. Macon County, I bought my land with my hard-earned money. I paid my taxes with my hard-earned money. And Macon County does not need to try to control what I can do on my land. That is the number one reason that I filed. I want the government to stay off of my land, and I want my freedoms. It seems like every single day, whether it be the local government, the county government, the state government, or the federal government, is stripping all of us from our freedoms. This was a hard decision. As Commissioner Tate, Chairman Tate said, I thank the world for this man. He is a friend. We're very good competitors, served on the fire department, everything. It was a very hard decision, but if it wasn't for this soil and erosion addendum, I probably wouldn't have filed. But it's also been questioned as to what else. You can't run on one issue. It's not one issue. Our government spending, the debt or the budget has increased over $5 million in the last six years. There's a little thing called the fund balance. The citizens, the taxpayers of Macon County, we're getting overtaxed. This money is going into the undesignated fund balance every single year. That is also known as a slush fund, okay? That means that we can tap into that money, build whatever we want. I don't believe in that. I think that the citizens and the taxpayers of this county, anytime there's a large expenditure, I think the people ought to have a say in what goes on. When you spend over $1 million for something, just not pick it up. But I grew up in Franklin. I graduated Franklin High School. At 12 years old, I picked tomatoes at AA Farms at Clark's Chapel to help buy my clothes and my school supplies. At 13, I went to work at a restaurant called Hickory Ranch. At age 14, I got a job in Highlands at Mountaineer Restaurant, where I worked until I graduated high school, and that's also where my wife is from. I married Lila Munger almost 32 years ago. We have three children. My daughter-in-law is Sarah Kimsey Sherrill. I have two grandchildren. I have another one on the way. I also want to protect Macon County, but it's not just protect Macon County for John Sherrill and his family. I want to protect Macon County for every citizen of this county, and I want to make sure that Highlands, Franklin, Otto, Nana Hala, Clark's Chapel, whoever gets their fair share. I've been talking to people around the county, and they've been telling me that they've been ignored, "We want, we need." Well, why isn't it provided? I have no idea. But I will tell you. Time's up. Sorry.
If you'll stay up there, because you're going to give the first question. We'll give you the first question, so stay put. What do you see as the top two challenges facing Macon County right now, and how would you address those challenges if you're elected?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Number one thing I see in Macon County right now is this drug problem we have. And as a county commissioner, I'm not sure that I know exactly, as a county commissioner, what we could actually do for that, but I'm open for that, for any suggestions or whatever. But our young people, and I own two businesses in Macon County, J. &amp; J. Lawns Landscaping Services in Highlands and Otto, I can't get any help. We do random drug screening. Don't apply. If you can't pass a drug test, we don't get anybody to apply. And I'm not saying every young person in Macon County is on drugs, but we're in trouble. Our workforce, we're in trouble. Look around, Macon County. Look at all the people that's looking for help. Nobody can find help. We're in trouble. The other thing, the other issue would be, as a conservative person, I think we need to listen to all of our services, provide the best services that we can, but when I say the best services, there's a price for that, and we have to be mindful for every citizen in this county as to what our taxes are. Just because I can pay a little bit more in taxes don't mean that our retired citizens of this county can't. So we need to be mindful for everybody. And the other, it was brought up to that I'm going to shut down the government. I am a very conservative person. I've worked hard for everything that I've ever gotten, and that's why I'm so conservative. But that don't mean I'm going to shut down the government. I believe in government. We need government, but we need limited government. I want the private sector to grow, not the government. So we need jobs in this county, but we also need people to do those jobs.
All right. The two items that I see, and these are in no particular order, by the way. Number one would be our broadband access. So how do we solve that? Boy, I wish I had the perfect answer. We're studying it hard every day. We have some great members of our board. We have some committees. We're actually studying it at the state level, and I spent some time with our Congressman Mark Meadows recently discussing that same issue, is how do we fund it? Because that's basically what it boils down to, is money. How do we fund it? So broadband is probably one of the top two items on my list. The second item is we are going through what is called a process where we're hiring a company to come and help us start what is called a capital improvement plan. So what is that? We have some really large items that Macon County is going to have to spend some money on. Franklin High School is due. Do we remodel it? Do we keep putting Band-Aids on it? Do we build a new one? Those are some decisions. Our senior services center is exploding at the seams. How can we expand for them? There's the times of the year Sheriff crack me from home, but our jail is overcrowded. We have some issues with our current courthouse. So how do we take care of all this? We've improvised, or what we're coming up with is capital improvement plans, so we can prioritize which one of these we take care of, what we put our money towards. Mr. Sherrill mentioned a minute ago our undesignated fund balance. So why do we want a big one? What good does that do for us? Well, number one is, is we've got to pay for all these items. Number two is, is it's good to have a little of the security blanket in case we have a disaster like the Peak's Creek disaster several years ago. Number three is, and this is probably the most important, when we go to get a, I'm just throwing this out there, when we go to get a $50 million loan to take care of our Franklin High School, all the banks are going to be looking at our credit rating. Currently, Macon County, because of our undesignated fund balance, and because of, we, this current group of commissioners has reduced our debt, cut it almost in half in the past seven years, from 60 million down to 30 million, we are now ranked in the top 10% of not only the counties of North Carolina, but of the entire country, top 10% county-wise financially. So why is that important? When we go to get that $50 million loan, you know the difference between a 2% loan and a 3% loan? It's a half million dollars a year, and that's how we're going to take care of it. So those are the two things, capital improvement plan, broadband, those are the two.
Well, I think we've already mentioned, you know, there's been some talk about services in communities outlined Franklin. How do you, as a commissioner, ensure that all the communities are getting adequate services? Do you feel like all the communities in Macon, especially Nana Hala, are receiving adequate services?
Boy, that's a, that's a great question. And that's one we deal with consistently as commissioners. I am currently the District 1 Commissioner, so I represent basically the southeastern, the eastern portion of the county. There's three commissioners that represent the central portion of the county, the Franklin area, and then Paul Higdon, who's here, represents District 3, which is the northwestern part of the county, District 3. Boy, you kind of stumped me there. That's a good one. Everyone that pays taxes in Macon County deserves to be treated equally. All the communities deserve to have funds. Presently, I guess, a lot of this stems from the Nana Hala community. We have a school over there that has less than 100 students in it, but yet we do our best to keep that school open. We probably spend more on a per-student basis in that community than any other school we have in Macon County. I know there's some issues over there right now that we've been hearing recently at some of our last commissioner meetings regarding their library, as well as their community building, and that's something that is 100% definitely going to be in our community, or our capital improvement plan that I mentioned a few minutes ago. But there's also other communities. Let's look at Otto. You know, what do we do to take care of them and their community centers? Highlands, what do we do to take care of the municipality that provides the majority of our tax base? What do we do for the Franklin community, where about 20% of our population is considered to be reached at a federal poverty level? What do we do for Franklin area, where the majority of our schools are? We have to provide the services for all these communities, and I'm not going to, as a commissioner, I'm not going to segregate. I'm not going to give one favoritism over the other. I'm going to work hard for all of them. I guess that's it.
How do you, as a commissioner, how can you ensure that all the communities are provided adequate services? Do you feel like they're being provided adequate services right now?
Number one thing, you've got to listen. And I had a meeting with the residents of Nana Hala. They're ignored, and they said that they are treated like the redheaded stepchild. They get nothing. I said, "If I'm a commissioner, this is how you get stuff, whether you have a spokesperson or whatever. You present your wish list, and let's put it on the budget, and that's how you will get the stuff." The same way with Highland, the same way with Franklin, same way with Otto, because if I'm elected commissioner, we are going to set a budget, and we're going to live inside that budget. We're not going to dip into this and that and everything else. I believe in a budget. I have to live on a budget at my house, and I'm sure most of you people have to have a budget in your household, and the government should not be any different whatsoever. So the answer to your question is, listen and pick and choose what services and what is needed for each community.
Do you want to stay up here? We'll let you go next. How do you rate the current Board of Commissioners effectiveness? Is there anything that you think that they could improve on specifically?
Well, number one, live inside a budget. You know, there was a tax increase a few years ago. The millage rate went from 27.9 to 34.9. That's a pretty significant tax increase, especially for our senior citizens that lives on a, on Social Security or however what means they have. But, you know, there again, the number one reason why I filed for this seat was my private property rights. You know, I haven't been keeping up with what the commissioners are doing. I just see the budget. I see the fund balance. I see we build this, we build that. So I've got two businesses to take care of, but the number one thing that got my attention is this soil and erosion addendum by Macon County that is going to require you to get a license to do work on your own land. That is unconstitutional, folks. We had some people here talking about, "I'm running because I believe in my freedoms," and all this other stuff. Let's not believe in them. Let's live them. That's what I'm about. I want less government in my life, and I want less taxes, and I'll be happy. But it's growth in government at all levels. So as far as their job is concerned, I haven't been keeping up with them, and I'm sure that each and every one of them feel they're doing the best thing in their county, but as a conservative person, I see differently.
I'm just as proud of the other four commissioners that I've served with as I am myself, one I've been able to do. I've brought a few notes here of some of our accomplishments that I jotted down this morning. Let me just go over a few of those in the past few years. We survived Obamacare with 360 employees without a tax increase. It's looking like this year alone, this year alone, we're going to have about a $650,000 increase over last year for our health insurance. Guess what? We're going to survive it without a tax increase, still the second lowest in the entire state of North Carolina. We have made significant enhancements to all of our recreation facilities. We built the Parker Meadows complex without a tax increase. We redid the Highlands pool and the Franklin pool without a tax increase. We just redid two of our community centers in Highlands and in Franklin without a tax increase. We've been able to provide our schools the facilities that they need. I mean, look what we've done in the past. I wasn't always a commissioner in this time. Look at what's been happening in the past 10 years, all the new schools being built. We have currently, right now, about a $2.5, $3 million improvement to South Macon without a tax increase. I feel like we are absolutely running, Macon County government is as efficiently as probably can be, and I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of the accomplishments that me and my fellow commissioners have been able to make. Thank you.
Of course, there's been a lot of talk about the grading license, so it's a pretty open-ended question on where you're standing, where the county stands right now, where are we in that process of the soil and erosion, and how you feel about it.
Good. The grading license, let me, let me preface this from what I've said from the beginning. I'm not a fan of Macon County government invading any of our personal property rights. I've said that from the get-go, and I've reiterated that numerous times. Let me give a little history on the Macon County grading license. It was started in, initiated in 2008. I became a commissioner in 2011. One of my goals as a commissioner is to consistently and constantly review all of our ordinances that we have in Macon County. It was time to review the grading license at the encouragement of Commissioner Higdon. We voted 5-0 to send it to the Macon County Planning Board for review, and we suspended the Macon County grading license. Last year, we received their review, got it back before us, and we went into discussion. We voted, I believe, Paul 4-1 to send it to public, if I remember correctly. Doesn't matter. Anyway, it got voted on by our commissioners by the majority to send it to public input, so we had a public hearing over it, brought the public in for discussion. We received a whole lot of uproar. Boy, we could kick the hornet's nest for this one. So we swallowed that for a month, and we talked about it, the commissioner said. We came back, we met again, heard some more input. And during that time period, we also learned that the state is reviewing. Anything the state does supersedes what Macon County government does. So we decided to leave it suspended. Now, where do I stand on it right now? Personally, I don't, won't vote for anything that has to be, that's going to take away your personal property rights. I'm not going to do it. I don't like a lot of the parts that the planning board provided to us, a lot of the sentences they had. In fact, that's dead because none of us decided to pass it, and that topic's dead. But personally, I think there's some good aspects to it. Now, what are those good aspects? Mr. Gray, I will pick on you. If you do a grading project on your property, I want you to see you keep all your silt on your property. It's no reason for it to flow over Mr. Flatt's property. I want to see you keep it on there. I think that's just common sense, and I think there's some educational aspects to grading license that are good. So I'm going to give my friend, Mr. Culpepper, back here, some credit because I learned this from him. So why don't we make it voluntary? You come, you get a land service permit from Macon County. What if we give you some materials that might help you? What's wrong with that? What's wrong with a little education? If you take them, great. Use them, great. If you don't, we're not going to force you to. But if we can make a difference and stop a major sedimentation issue, then we can. And that's kind of where I stand with it.
Say it again, please.
Where do you stand on the grading license program?
What I'm campaigning on, I am totally against this grading license. I don't want any more government rules, regulations, anything, especially on my own private property. I've been around town of Highland, town of Franklin, and I'm sure there's other places where the government is doing grading, and it comes a big rain and the mud flows down off the hillside, right into Little Tennessee River, the last one I saw. So just because the government says, the government don't know everything, folks. They, they don't. I mean, it's a group of people just mostly like we are, but it's nothing more than government control. I don't want any more government control. And it's my understanding that this thing came up for vote three different times in the front of the Macon County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Higdon made a motion to abolish this. This is not a state addendum. It's a Macon County addendum. It's not a state license. It's a Macon County license. Commissioner Higdon could not get a second. Just because something's suspended, it's as live today as it ever has been. So what's going to take place after this election cycle? And that's one thing that I want to express. This is a primary race. Whoever wins the election on May 8th, Chairman Tate or myself, that's it. That'll be your next county commissioner. There is not a ballot for our seat in District 1 in November. So folks, we had an opportunity to get rid of this. Mr. Higdon could not get a second, and I would love to know what is the purpose other than we say that this sedimentation, keep the silt on your property, keep it on my property? You know, that's a civil matter, not a government matter. If I go in and I do work on my land, and I cause problems on your land, is that not a civil matter? I think it is. There are civil courts in this country for that. I don't need the government to tell me. So that's where I stand on it. If it was in front of me as a county commissioner tonight, I would vote to abolish that immediately. Thank you.
Can we just stay up there?
Oh.
This will be the last question that comes from us, and then since we had two, we only had two submitted, we'll go ahead and take both of those as well. This one is, the Macon County school system is looking at $3 million in capital needs for the coming year, and that doesn't even include renovations for Macon Middle School or Franklin High School. What can the county do to meet these capital improvement needs?
Put it in the budget. That's what we need to do. We need to adopt a budget, and we need to live in the budget. If our kids, our schools, we need. I'm a product of Macon County school system. My wife is. My kids are. I want the schools to be the best they can be for our students, and I go back to that best again. Best has got a cost, and I believe honestly that anytime that we have any major expenditure in this county, and our county government funds, the citizens and the taxpayers of this county should have a say in it. And if I am elected as county commissioner, District 1, I will listen, and I will vote to provide whatever you say that we can afford. to provide whatever you say that we can afford, but it will be in the budget. And, so, that's...
Is there anything you see the commissioners can cut out of the current budget to make room for these capital improvements?
I'm not in the, I've been disconnected from the county budget for, when I ran for this seat in 2014, I reviewed the county budget. I dissected that county budget and I have not reviewed the county budget since. But I'm not willing to cut services just so we can cut the budget, okay? But I believe through the entire county and their needs, just because you ask for $500,000 does not mean that you're gonna get $500,000 because we've got to share that money the best we can and not cut our services.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Macon County school system is looking at $3 million in capital needs for this coming year. That doesn't include significant renovations for Macon Middle School and Franklin High School. What can the county do to meet those capital improvement needs?
That's a question that the five commissioners are here tonight will be discussing thoroughly over the next two months. That's why I mentioned the capital improvement plan earlier tonight. And that's why we have a large fund balance, because when these unexpected issues come up, we have a little bit of a piggy bank where we might be able to take care of some of this. If you don't have that, boy, you're really up the creek without a paddle. I have been a firm and strong supporter of our school system. Macon County runs about a $48 million budget and this year, hadn't been passed yet, but my guess is, is about almost a third of that is gonna go to our school system. Another large portion of that is gonna go to public safety. Why is that? Because we need our community to be safe before we can really even have school, when it all boils down to it. I'm a strong supporter of Sheriff Holland and his law enforcement officers and what they do for our schools. And I will continue to do that. So, again, capital improvement plan, how we do that, so we have a fund balance in case we have to have it. If we desire, if we find out that these needs are 100%, again, we're just now starting the discussions and if we find they're 100%, we gotta have them, no other way around it. Guess what? We can afford it if we have to, because we're in outstanding financial condition.
Audience question for you. Late this summer, the Forest Service will release recommendations for a new forest management plan. What is your position on more wildlife habitat, more timber cutting, and more wilderness?
Well, that could be another political hot button. But let me take, do we take each one of those, each one by one and I'll give them to you? Wilderness habitat was the first one?
Wilderness habitat.
100% pro for it, no doubt in my mind. More wilderness habitat, or wildlife habitat that we can have, the better and I'll all for it. I've seen the good that it can do for our forests.
Next to timber cutting, more timber cutting?
That's actually a really, we talked about schools with a prior question. Every little piece of timber that gets cut in Macon County, we get some funds back and it goes for schools. So, I'm pro timber cutting, as long as it's not within our primary view sheds and around any extremely important, special areas such as our waterfalls and some of our mountains.
And more wilderness designations?
I'm not for any more wilderness designations. I'm happy where we are.
Well, this is a topic that I'm not familiar with. As I stated earlier, I signed up for this seat to protect my private property rights, stop this growth in our budget. And, the fund balance, again. The fund balance is taxpayers' money. That don't belong to the county government. That belongs to the citizens of Macon County that pays their taxes. So, yeah, it is nice. The state recommends an 8% fund balance. On a $50 million fund balance, you're looking at $4 million. We got 20-plus million dollars in the piggy bank. But anyways, yes, I'm all for, I'm an outdoorsman, I love more wildlife and everything. As far as the wilderness, I wanna more wilderness. As far as timber cutting, I have no information on that, so. But there again, I signed up for this seat to protect my private property rights and that's why I'm here. And, so, increase in taxes, not for it. This county spending, not for it. Growth in government, not for it. Taking my freedoms, not for it. So, that's where I stand and that's why I'm running. It may not have answered your question, but that's why I'm here. And I will listen to the citizens of this county and if they say that they want something, they think it's the best thing that we have, who am I to go against what the citizens of Macon County want? That's where I stand.
Then, are there any audience members that have any questions for John while he's up here?
My question is actually almost like a statement. You say that you're for, you know, you don't, you're not up for this slush fund that we have. Well, if we don't have the slush fund and we have to build a new school or we have to build some of these other, where do you expect the money to come from? And you don't want higher taxes, do you not think that we're gonna get higher taxes in order to pay for all of this?
Well, let's just put it this way. That is an undesignated emergency fund. It is not in there to build you a new school.
No, it's to keep the interest down.
It's to keep the interest down? The state recommends 8%. Okay, so why would we be any different than the rest of the state?
Why not be better than that then?
We can be better than that.
So, we are better.
So, you like paying more taxes than what your fair share? I don't want the government having my money. That's what that, that's what that is. That's where that money comes from. You, as a taxpayer and citizen of Macon County, is overtaxed and it goes into the Macon County piggy bank. That's where the money comes from. And I don't, I pay enough taxes, I don't wanna pay anymore.
And without that money there and they have to go out and borrow the money, we are going to have to pay higher taxes in order to pay for it.
We borrow money all the time, as Commissioner Tate, or Chairman Tate just said a few minutes ago. When he became county commissioner, the debt was $63 million. It's down to $34 million. Where'd that money come from? We borrowed it.
All right. Any other questions for John?
You were talking about the millage rates?
Yes.
Do you know why the millage rate went up?
Oh, I know why. It's because of this revenue neutral stuff. Yes, it is. And you know why the, the, okay. Go ahead, I'm gonna listen to your question.
But why, do you know why?
When somebody asks a question of the candidates, would you repeat the question?
Sure. He's asking about the millage rate and we're talking about why the millage rate went up.
Why the millage rate is at the rate it is now?
Yeah. And it is for revenue neutral, but do you know why the millage rate went up so much in 2015?
Or is that your question?
Well, it's just generally about the millage rate.
Okay, but are you finished asking me your question?
Yes.
Okay. My response to you is, is the millage rate went up because the land values dropped from $9 billion to $7 billion? Well, guess what? That's my land. I lost 40% of my value on my land and guess what? That's my investment. And guess what? The county government never slowed down one beat, did they? Their budget never dropped, their budget was the same, but you know what? My value on my family dropped significantly. Who do I go after? I can't go out there to my clients and say, "Hey, I'm gonna raise my rates up just because I lost 40% of my land value," because they did the same thing. That's why the millage rate dropped or it increased, because the government, that's the difference from being a conservative person. Every single time you need more money, you just can't go out there and raise taxes on people because people cannot afford it. Okay? We have a lot of senior citizens in this county and they're on a fixed income and $20 to me, you know, I can afford $20. There's a lot of people in this county that can't. And just for the government to go out there and increase your taxes because they don't wanna look at the budget and say, "Hey, you know, we may need to, we may need to cut a little bit of this, of our budget down." Mr. Sheriff?
Sir?
You may not get all your money this year because you know what? We're in a financial crisis.
I did.
Right?
All right, let's move on. Is there any questions for Mr. Tate?
Can we have each candidate respond to the same question?
Yeah. Mr. Tate, if you wanna come up here and say something.
Will you repeat question one and I'll...
I said, without the slush fund that we have, if we did not have that and we had to have to stop borrowing money for schools and senior centers and things like that, would our taxes not go up to help pay for all of this?
100% yes. We'd have two choices. Doing a quarter percent sales tax hike or raising property taxes, one of the two.
The millage rate, we had to work with the same money that the county had before the revaluation.
Same question. Why did the millage rate increase significantly?
Because the county had to deal with the same money that they had before.
That's correct. These are round numbers, but Macon County brings in every year approximately $26 million from property tax revenue. The state requires us to do what is called a property revaluation every four years. In 2015, the commissioners got by, were doing it for eight years.
It was 2007.
2007, and in four years, they voted to extend it to 2015. So, in 2015, they still needed to bring in, let's use the number, $26 million. That's what revenue neutral means. 2014, $26 million, 2015, $26 million. Had to raise the millage rate from .279, I believe, to .349 to keep that same rate. If we would've had a tax increase, we'd have brought in more than that $26 million, but we didn't. The state requires us to post what revenue neutral is whenever we go through a revaluation. That's the general statute. Now, when you talk about that, because our overall, our overall property values went down, we still had to bring in the $26 million, yes. Some people had what I guess you consider an increase in what they're paying into Macon County every year to reach that revenue neutral portion, but guess what? Some people had a tax decrease. At all balances, at all equals $26 million. Can I ask you questions again? Yeah, thank you.
Let's get around to some of them. Are there any other questions? Sir?
Yes, sir.
I'll stand up so maybe everybody can hear me. This is probably just more of a statement than anything else. I think instead of worrying about whether I regrade my driveway or not, I'm a homeowner. Instead of worrying about little stuff like that, I'll say something that's really unpopular. This is a beautiful library. I've probably never been a library any prettier than this. It's beautiful. But don't the commissioners need to decide, do we need this or do we need a new library at the school in that hay? And I think some might need to think about the common sense things that the county needs.
I agree. Karen, you mind if I put you on the spot and tell for the funds for this library campaign?
Well, the county did help pay for the construction of this building, absolutely. So, the cost for this building? Cost for this building was $5.5 million. Private citizens raised over $1 million of their own money to help pay for the furnishing, equipping, and equipment in this library. So, the county paid for the construction of the building, but the citizens spoke quite loudly and said, "We wanna see a successful library and we're willing to give our own dollars to make that happen." So, our friends of the library and our library board and members of the community led that effort to raise over $1 million to help match some of the money that the county contributed for this library. This serves as the main library for Macon County. We do have two branch libraries, one in Highlands community, one in the Nantahala community. And we look forward to making improvements to those libraries as well.
I love the library. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, but that's not the point. Point is, there are kids in Nantahala that are going to school and they got a problem with the library, they can't drive to Franklin to fly very good.
I agree. Yeah, I agree. And you will see me vote for that whenever that comes before us.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We are out of time. I'm sure the candidates will be around for a few minutes if you have any more questions.